I'm sorry, it's okay. I apologize. Hopefully Rick will join us soon. So we're gonna call to order. And... First item is looking over the meeting minutes from July 16th.
So called orders, everybody, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna continuously say his five minutes late, so...
Yeah, just... Alright, um...
I just put him present unless he doesn't show up.
Right, that's a good idea. Alright, let's look at the meeting minutes from July 16th. Everybody have a chance to look those over? Any corrections or changes need to be made? I think they're pretty good, I didn't see any different.
Okay, the attachment is this document which you...
It is, that's the old one, but yeah, you're right.
Unless you have an updated one.
Um, the one we do tonight will be updated. The item that will be on it again, old business is...
No, 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 from the previous one.
Yeah, you're right.
This is the ones we already did.
That's it? Um... What, what was number...
Two, 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 two.
Two, twenty-eight, twenty-one, eight, three point three?
Well, you gotta look at, not the one we just tagged, but the one from...
No, no, that's, you're fine. You're fine.
Okay, not the one you, you gave us.
Correct.
To, that you said.
Yep.
Alright, so, I moved that we have problem minutes?
A second? Alright, let's get started. Okay, so everybody has in front of them. Um, and I don't, I didn't make myself one copy because I'm, I'm gonna keep mine digital. Um, you have a, start with old business. Um, it's kind of a, it's just a Word document. It gives us a good layout, that's it, you got it. Um, you also have a underwriting bulletin that comes from our insurance company for the community. And then you also have some fencing, uh, like a fencing chart that we will look at later. Has everybody got those?
Yep.
Yep, you got it, that's it.
Is it being an original?
Actually, I printed it on fancy paper because I forgot I have fancy paper.
Alright.
Alright, so...
But, but what I did not see, and I don't know if we're gonna do anything with it, is that this whole thing doesn't talk about what we brought up at one point, which was, uh, if a fence, I guess, okay, so, it would not apply to the entire fence. It would be a fence that it's around the pole. Remember, we talked about the pole, that the, the way it is?
We did talk about that, and I think that, we'll address it at the, at the very bottom, because that's where fencing is at this point. We're gonna, we're gonna pick this up again in the next meeting. That one we will not do all of tonight. Um, but we'll get a good, a good chunk done. Let's start with the old business, accessory solar collector and energy systems residential.
This one?
Yep, that's where we're gonna start. So we're gonna start with, uh, solar. We started talking about solar back in May. Right now, there is only one thing in our UDO that talks about solar, and basically just says, um, there's no solar section. It's in the building standards and it talks about, um, solar on roofs being, you know, flat to the roof. That's really all that we talk about. We don't talk about ground, we don't talk about other applications, we don't talk about anything else. And when we're talking about this, let's keep in mind, this is residential only. We're not talking about a solar farm. This is just applying to residential only.
Okay, so, I, what I wanna bring up that I found out, is that actually, in, at the last meeting of Moore County, uh, I don't know if you're aware of the fact that they took up this item that they're going to amend to comply with a ruling from the Supreme Court?
That's, uh, I, you go ahead with yours, but, but there is a ruling under North Carolina general statutes. Are you talking about 168-201?
I didn't write the number.
And 153A, 144. What that basically says is, as a community, no HOA, no community can write zoning that prohibits solar, um, solar facility. What we can do is guide it. We cannot prohibit any residents from having it. But we can guide how they have it and what is acceptable.
How many different types of solar, I mean, there's roof solar, obviously?
Really, for us, we're gonna be dealing with ground, solar, ground mounted or pole mounted, um...
They could, they, they have it, Moore County has as an, as a building component and accessory.
That too. We are, what, we are gonna, what, this is, if you'll read through this, um, it, it really does come out to an accessory item for your building. So just like an accessory building, you would have, you would apply for it as an accessory to your home. Um, and it, it would still be, it would be just like if you're building the home from the beginning, it would be just like you were adding accessory, you get that approved as part of your build.
But is, is any, any of this unsightly or ugly or anything?
It can be, it can be. And that's why I think, um, from everything that I read, I came to two conclusions. And these are just based on other UDOs, I checked Southern Pines. Um, but really, theirs was, was a little bit lackadaisical, um, less than what I think we were looking for. What I did look into is Ashboro. Ashboro has a plethora and a huge section based on solar. And they're pretty content with splitting, you know, in-town, uh, low density from out-of-town, very, very low density. And the way that they've split those things, and I found it to be pretty palatable, um, where you have the different, you have, you know, everybody that's in town and in a, a low-density area, you have small lots, houses are closer together. That would be a roof mount or accessory building mount, something above the ground, not where you can see it from a road, not from where you can see it from a public or a common space. The other piece is, you know, there are large, large lots area in the low, low density. So RA5, RS200, um, what is it? Uh, RA, RF200 and EU. Those are all large lots. That would be a application where a pole-mounted or ground-mounted, um, solar would probably not be unpalatable for the location and the application that they're using it for.
We just don't want to have somebody that puts a little mini farm into their backyard.
And that is not really, and honestly, for a residential application, that's not what you're looking for. There are two types of residential, there, when we talk about types, there's two ways. There's in-grid and out-of-grid, so off-grid and in-grid. So that's two different ways to hook up. And then the other piece of it is you have panels, and now they have, um, shingles. And they also have, um, they have panel shingles and then, you know, these fan things that would look more like a satellite. Um, go ahead.
No, but, uh, I just, well, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Because I, I copied. This is from the pilot and it's from August 20th, so it's today. It says, "The Moore County Planning Board heard request from staff to amend what's known as a, uh, UDO regarding ground-mounted solar panels and something else. According to county planners, the existing language regarding ground-mounted solar panels is inconsistent with state law. The county can regulate the location of the panels, but it cannot regulate the height or size."
Um, what I read in the, these two, uh, GS, the, the North Carolina, um, general statutes, that you could regulate. And maybe that went to the, to Supreme Court, but really, if it's out in our larger areas, what, you know, if, if we don't...
What I'm trying to say is that, my feeling when I read this was that, why don't we either find out directly from them? What is it that they're gonna amend so that, you know, maybe we, we line up with what they're saying? And if we're not gonna line up, then if they're, if they're saying, it says, "Currently, the ordinance contains language stating that panels cannot exceed thirty percent of the footprint of the principal structure," and apparently, they're gonna amend that.
Um, none of the language in what I have found, it, it has any, there is a high differentiation. I, I pulled that from several UDOs and then wrote in what matched up with our UDO.
But I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I don't know when this came into place, and if...
This was written in 2007. And then there was an update recently, but the, the, the update was very minimal. Here's my question. I don't think that we have to set, if, if we don't wanna set a height, we don't have to. But we do need to start discussing what is allowable in what zones and how that's gonna come together for us. I think the height thing is a semantic. That is, they already have it in their UDO and they have a robust section about that. If they take height or whatever out, that's fine. We don't even have to set a height if we feel like we shouldn't. Um, this is a, this is just continuing the discussion that we had started and we've been asked to finish multiple times, just because Lisa keeps getting, I think she's getting requests.
Would you have a problem if I called and asked them?
No.
Talk to a planner and find out what is it? I mean, if maybe they can send me whatever they have and what, what they're going to amend?
Absolutely.
So that we can take it and talk about it?
Yeah, I think that that's a...
I did get ahold of Carthage on their SES. They do have ground-mounted setbacks, they do have height restrictions, they do have based-on-zoning. It's super efficient, it's super clear, so, you know, from my perspective on handling Carthage, as you asked me to.
Yeah.
It's working for them.
And I think Carthage runs most of their stuff very congruent with the county. So the county language is probably gonna be very close to that. If you'll read through, if everyone would take a minute and read through this, you know, area here.
Yeah.
And see what you think can be, is there anything that jumps out that needs to be thrown away immediately that you just do not agree to? Um, keeping in mind, we are gonna contact the county and find out what they're, um, what, what they're talking about with this height restriction coming out. Because I'm not, I mean, I saw these two rulings and I thought that, um, 153A, 144 was that Supreme Court ruling, um, but it, it, maybe I missed something. So let's look through this, let's see if there's anything in here that you feel like is, A, just not good for Foxfire? B, do you feel like needs to be thrown out because it may come into a legal situation where we're not allowed to set a parameter? Um, and on this shall be permitted in RA5, I just didn't, I typoed and didn't put in the remainder of those. That would be RA5, RA, RF200 and EU, if you wanna make a note on your, um, the ground-mounted systems.
Okay, I, I, I just wanna find out what is it, uh...
But can you take a look at what I've written and see if that's...
Yeah, no, I definitely will. But what I'm trying to say is that if, maybe all of these places are gonna amend theirs, because if there's...
They can't amend all of it because the general statute follows this. Like, the entire general statute wasn't thrown out. It's just maybe a height or a percentage agreement that might have been. Now, if you wanna throw it off the docket for tonight, is that what you're asking to do? Just until we figure it out?
Well, I mean, until, until we find out what specifically we can mount.
Isn't that what we were supposed to research last month when we left?
Yep.
So, why do we need to still continue to do that?
Uh, I think it's, um, she's wanting to call Carthage and talk to them about, uh, what... The county, not Carthage. The county and see what they're, because they just had a pilot article that said that they had, I guess something had gone to the Supreme Court. They can't set height or percentage, um, things. In here, I did set a height, but I did not set any percentages. Um, because the size, from my research, the size of the panels or, um, shingles, or it, it depends on what you're using, the technology you're using, whether it's the older or newer. It, it basically set based on the size of the home, the square footage of the home, how much energy you need in the home to start with. So there, those are so specific that I felt, I felt like it was hard to say, you can't cover twenty percent of your roof, or you can't cover thirty percent of your roof. We can't tell them they can't have solar anyway, because that's state law.
Right, that's it, yeah.
So, in order to stay within state law, but be reasonable so our, you know, other neighbors are not affected by this, um, that is where I tried, that's the lane I tried to stay in. Um, so...
I, I'm, I'm curious also about one more thing, and I don't know if it matters or not, but I remember, uh, you know, obviously, it's not from here, but I remember my friend trying to put panels in Los Angeles and they didn't allow her to put them in a certain location of the roof because it was reflecting onto, so, that other problem.
If you read through here, you'll see that I've addressed that. Anti-glare materials are gonna have to be incorporated as part of your accessory.
Alright.
So tempered glass, anti-glare, reflective coating, those are things that need to be used in a neighborhood. Um, that wouldn't necessarily apply to somebody out in the ETJ, in the large lot areas, or RA, RA5. I need to stop saying ETJ. But, um, that needs to be a consideration when you're talking about roof-mounted systems in the community.
Okay. Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll check with them and give, and send you some, okay?
Okay. So have, do, do you think there's anything else in here through there that you see? Now, I do know, we have a decommissioning section in our UDO, um, already, when it deals with the farms. So I think that same decommissioning language can be used for this, just in a little bit less strenuous. It's gonna be a lot simpler because it's residential. But we already have decommissioning information and how to decommission, what happens if your panels are no longer working or in disrepair. We have that already, that language in the UDO. I think that should just be copied down, um, not copied, but, you know, um, used as a heavy reference.
So decommissioning, it just simply means removal of inoperable...
Right.
Solar panels?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
So what does, so the decommissioning that we already have established is for what?
That's for solar farms. So like the big farm that's out on, on Hoffman Road. The decommissioning, all of the rules that they have set there are really, they're, they're, I tried to look at those and make sure that they matched up to this as well, but applied more to a residential individual thing, not necessarily a commercial application. And then the decommissioning part, I just didn't put in there yet because I, I wanted to kind of chew this up first. Um, but the decommissioning part is pretty standard. Um, just basically, like he said, talks about when you don't have an operating system, if a system is visibly in disrepair, um, how to decommission, what that looks like, replace and repair, pretty much.
Yeah, Carthage had that written out also.
Exactly. I was actually shocked, Carthage did not have, they had maybe one little blurb and it was so minimal. It was just almost not there. Um, it was just not, it's not, there's no guidance around it, really. Um... And then, so I, I basically attacked the two that would be the most residential, roof-mounted systems and ground-mounted systems. And then we talked about visibility. Active solar systems shall be designed to blend into the architecture or building or be screened from routine view from public right-of-way or adjacent residential zones, zone property of the greatest extent practical, given the design and site constraints of each particular property. That would come down to the administrator. Um, so at the end, you'll see there's, um, planned requirement. Um, all solar collection systems shall require an approval by the Foxfire Village zoning administrator. Plan application shall be accompanied by two-scale horizontal and vertical elevation drawings and a site plan. Site plan must include the location of the system on the building or on the property for ground-mounted systems and include property lines and distances. So this will ultimately come down to the administrator to approve whether or not these things go and where the location is, what's feasible, and work with each individual application.
By the administrator?
Lisa, yeah, yeah. And then I did address, um, in-grid and off-grid systems. Um, if you have an in-grid system, we need to have some kind of proof saying that the utility company has approved this and that they are, um, that you have some type of contract with them. Whatever they do to approve these things, that you can feed into the system.
But it's gotta be some kind of...
Absolutely. Gotta be, gotta be, yeah. So you have to apply, you have to send that in with your application as well.
What's the difference?
There's an in-grid system and an off-grid system. Off-grid system runs solely on batteries. So Tesla actually has a really cool one out right now. Uh, but it's a long, and this has been around for thirty years. So basically, an off-grid system would, um, you would have a, a box that would transform that solar energy into usable energy and then that would, that would actually charge batteries that you have at a location in your home. And then you have the ability to turn that on and off by yourself, or you can actually run off that battery and then when the batteries get low, switch over to electric. That's off-grid. Then you have an on-grid system that runs more through the power company. So basically, you feed all of your solar into the power grid and then they give you credit for all of the solar that you fed in and that basically takes care of your bill and then you get paid if you have extra come. And it's like, if you give them extra wattage, then they pay you for that wattage. Or if you have less than what your house uses, then you have to pay whatever non-fee is left. So that's the two different types of system. I just wanted to make sure that if they have an in-grid system, that the rest of the people in the neighborhood are not affected by that being put into that system without the right permits and the utility companies, you know, bringing their knowledge in. Because I don't want anybody having a power outage over somebody's, you know, stuff, so... That's, that's pretty much the thick of it. Um, and I, I think, you know, given what Teresa saw, I think that I did have a height requirement, not more than twenty feet on the ground-mounted systems. But if that has gone to the Supreme Court, we could easily throw that out. But I feel like this is a good starting point.
I mean, the Carthage had. They have for the ground-mounted, no more than twenty feet, for the roof-mounted, no higher than thirty-five feet.
Yeah, and I, I left the roof-mounted, um, alone right now. I wanted to kind of get the roof's input. I felt there was, most of the, the stuff I saw was, it couldn't be any higher than the highest point of the roof. So that way you don't have it sticking above the roof. So I felt like it needs to be flush mount to the roof and that's that. Um, and that way, we don't have, you know, in the sideline of the trees, a whole bunch of, you know, solar things sticking up. So that was kind of where I was, but I wanted to get the group's input, see where you were, what you thought. You know, living in this neighborhood, what would you find palatable? What would you wanna see? You know, do you, you know, I don't think it'll be that noticeable.
Do you have examples of what each of these, I mean, it'd be easier to...
Yeah, you can look them up. They're pretty, they're pretty easy, um, they're all over Cary and Durham and Raleigh, um...
Okay. I don't think something going ten feet above your roofline is gonna be very appealing.
No, I felt like that, you know, leaving it flush mount, and that's an extreme model.
Yeah.
Um, this is a flush mount here, this is an extreme application, it's usually nowhere near that big.
Yeah.
Um, typically...
It is becoming more common though, really.
Yes. Typically, you see, you know, and it, it's really, once it's in the roof system, it really just blends in as long as you have some anti-glare on there.
Yeah, ideally, it's like you said, these shingles now.
Yeah, that's super cool, but right now, that's the newest technology, gonna be the most expensive. So, in ten years from now, the shingles will be probably on most every home.
Yeah.
Um, just to be able to cut down on the, the amount of, um, energy we pull out of the system. You're exactly right. Even if it's a minimal amount, I think it's gonna be, you know, something, sustainability is such a, a huge thing right now, you know, with our water, with our solar, you know, with our, our energy, all of it. It's such a, um, a huge topic right now and something...
I mean, it's sort of off-topic, but you, you mentioned before about sending energy back to the grid. You know, if every house has got shingles on and it's self-sufficient and it's sending energy back, boy, Duke Energy's gonna be in trouble.
Oh, they're just gonna raise the price. They're not fools. So, yeah, and I think the roof applications for, in the community, and this is, um, just so you see, that's the shingles. That's the shingle application, but like Teresa said, if you don't have a regulation around, um, the tempered glass or the extra coating you have to put on for anti-reflection, that is what you get, and it's like a mirror.
Have, have you ever had a, a blinding glare that you've experienced?
Well, yeah, I mean, from like just cars, cars, they're...
No, but I mean from a solar panel.
Oh, no, I've never seen one that didn't have reflective on it. Um, even the ones down here, and the reason a lot of them are, the, um, the North Carolina Board of Aviation has a huge issue with solar farms, because if they don't have the anti-glare, once those, once those move into the up position, they're basically flat all the way across the field, that is a huge glare point and it's blinding pilots. If you don't have the anti-glare or the tempered glass, they're, the pilots can't see. Like it's a, it's, like it's a draw point and it blinds the pilot, it's bad. So I think most of the state, um, the state has also wrote wording that says that there needs to be an anti-glare or reflective on there.
Good.
Yeah, and I think also, if you're within five miles of an airport, there has to be some compliance followed.
Definitely.
That, I know.
Are we within five miles of an airport? I don't know that we are.
No, we're far.
I don't think we are.
The Little Moore County Airport is probably what, eleven or twelve miles out?
I was gonna say, that's probably, that's probably a good twelve miles out. But, you know, just for compliance and, and neighborly, um, goodwill, I think it would be better to just set it upfront to know, hey, I don't wanna be blinding my neighbor across the street. We have to have tempered glass, we have to have reflective. I am all about clean energy, love it, but let's not interrupt somebody's morning coffee with your crazy blinding stuff.
So, not to change the subject, but on this two, two B.
Hmm, let me get over there.
Didn't we just decide that, didn't, didn't you just say that ten feet, more than ten feet would be a little bit unsightly? I mean, are we talking about reducing that or what are we talking about?
Um, and I, I didn't put ten feet, that was in the Carthage. I think Car, did you say Carthage had that, no more than ten feet?
Twenty feet on the ground, thirty-five on the roof.
Okay, so they had a thirty-five, it could go above your roof thirty-five feet. That's not what I...
But, but two B's talking about a setback, it's, that's different.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah, 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 it is a setback, you're right.
Yep.
Do we address height in here?
No.
We don't, okay.
No, I think, well, I did say in two B, for ground-mounted systems, no, no taller than twenty feet in height. But I may have to take that wording out, depending on what Teresa said, what she finds out and says. Um, the, basically, the roof-mounted systems, which is really gonna cover ninety percent of, you know, the neighborhoods. Um, in addition to building setback, the collector's surface and mounting device for a roof-mounted solar system shall not extend beyond exterior perimeter of the building on which the system is mounted. And maybe we put some wording in there vertically or horizontally.
Yeah.
To make sure that it doesn't leave the roof space. And there will be people, and mostly, um, I put in there, prohibited on the facade, facade. So not, you can't put it on the front of your house. Um, but, um, you can put it on accessory buildings, on, I guess, detached garages, anything of that nature.
Barn shed.
Mm-hmm. Collector devices shall be mounted opposite of areas open to public or common spaces. So we want people to try to put them, when feasible, on the backs of their homes, facing backyards, you know, away from the front views of roads, things of that nature. There will be times that's not feasible and there's, you know, according to state law, there's nothing we can do about that. I think it's gonna be a lot of cooperation between the homeowner and the village administrator to find, and, and to the, the solar company. They'll be coming and go, okay, this is where this has to be.
Here's kind of a dumb question.
No, it's not a dumb question.
Do these things make any noise?
No, there is no noise.
There's no hum or any noise?
Not in this application. For the fields, if you stand within twenty feet of that field, you're gonna hear a hum and you will hear them move.
Oh, really?
They actually move. They go from this way all the way around, they follow the sun. So they really just go all the way around, but as they move, you'll hear them.
Okay.
Um, but, and, and you hear a little bit of a hum if you're close enough. But on a residential application, there's just not enough...
We don't even have to address that?
No, there, there's no, um, there's negligible noise issue. Um, from the statistics of what most people have pulled, and I can send you guys, um, I pulled up a North Carolina, it was written in 2014, it's a North Carolina solar zoning, um, guideline. They did all, they put in all the statistics from different states, um, but Michigan had done a, a study and their study came back that there, it was negligible on noise. The main thing that they had complaints about were, was glare, um, or, um, sightliness.
Okay.
For, and, and that was mainly associated with the ground, um, specifically the pole.
Sure.
Um, because they, you can put them, you know, some of them are nicely on the ground and kind of tucked back into a backyard. And then you have some that are on a pole and that could be twenty feet up in the air with a giant panel on it that moves throughout the day. Um, that was the one that, that tended to, to cause the most complaint.
Hmm, okay.
Alright, anything else on that one? That's our first look at it. I'm gonna put in the decommissioning part from our UDO and just match it up to what the residential, um, stuff would make sense. You know, take the same decommissioning language, but apply it to a residential application. And then we will revisit this again, um, next meeting, first, first thing.
So you're gonna add, fill in this?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and add that in and then, um, we'll find out what Teresa finds out and then we can maybe put that one to bed next meeting.
Okay.
Alright, um... Teresa, when you find out from the county, find out what state laws they're, they're talking about. What's the general statute or what, what, where can we find that wording?
Okay, I'll, I'll try to get as much information as I can.
All right. And we'll address the final at September meeting. I know you will not be here for that meeting, do you have any, if you have any other input, will you write us a note and we'll read it during the meeting? All right. And Teresa will send that out to all of us, what she finds, and then-
Maybe you can submit something to, or send me something.
Yeah.
If you write something in writing.
That's awesome, yeah, that would be great, and then she'll share that with all of us, you can write whatever, send it to me, and then I will, um, bring it to meeting, but I can't, we can't discuss it outside.
If this was, uh, brought up by a meeting, they have, they have to have some type of documentation-
I would say, yeah.
For the discussion.
Absolutely, well, their, their legal department's far robo- more robust than ours. So I bet they're seeing things that we might not have picked up on, so, okay. Um, we can move along to, um, revisiting old business again, going to, if you turn your page, it's in there, yeah. Um, going to the tightening of the village business sta- uh, district language around fencing. Um, when I took this to the village meeting, uh, or to the work session, they wanted us to, um, each item needs to be exact type of fencing, exact opacity, so I went-
Oh, because there was confusion.
Right, so I went back to the drawing board, went back and researched, um, Southern Con U D O, and basically came back with what is written here. Um, I made a couple corrections, but mostly it's what was there. Fence is visible from public streets or which of but residential zoning shall be of wood, stone, brick, wrought iron, aluminum, powder coated aluminum, PVC, or a combination of these materials. I added with the decorative side of the fence facing outward, that's something we voted on last time, or we added that. Um, what we did not vote on last time is, um, where it says fences, walls, abut non-residential zoning may be a vinyl coat of chain link if screened with. That's where we had voted on mature plantings, they had a problem with that word, mature, how do you define that? So I went to Lisa and I called some of our area, um, horticulture places and had them define it for me, and basically they've defined it as one-third of the smallest max height. Because in our area in the Sand Hills, things don't typically max out, like a alvarada won't get seventy feet tall, but it'll get fifty feet tall.
One-third of that?
One-third of smallest?
One-third of the smallest max height, so for a, um, you know, for a fifty-foot plant, a mature planting would be about fifteen feet at maturity. But I talked to Lisa and she said, who in the world is gonna be going around measuring these plants?
And this is the end of that call, right?
Oh, you don't want us to define it that way, she says, um, how am I, I mean, you have to make it policeable. I have to be able to, to keep this, you know, it has to be doable.
Where is this language about the?
That is what we had already voted, oh, what do you mean, which part?
The one that you just read about, uh, landscaping.
Um, that was in the old one, that's what we brought to the board. I was, I haven't even gotten to the point where I've changed it yet. Yeah, this is what we brought to the board, um. We, this is what we voted on last meeting and I took to the board for the work session.
It's your right there.
That's what we took to the board, this is the new part-
Okay.
That I, I changed just as a starting point, it's not-
The old school plant material?
It's not in stone, this is kind of just-
So it's five feet tall at the time of planting?
So-
What are you saying here, let's see. I'm trying to figure it out. Fences, walls that are but non-residential zoning may be screened with view obscuring plant.
It's meaning you basically defined mature that you just described to us, right?
And I took out the one-third, because that made it harder for the administrator, and put in five feet. In this application, it's just for commercial, this is village business district only.
Okay, this is commercial.
Just village, but this is only for the village bus- business districts, this is only discussing section twenty-eight, or twenty-one, eight, three point three, village business district. So this is basically, we were addressing dust, dumpsters, donation boxes, similar facilities, and the view of them.
We're only talking about that fencing?
We're, that's right, we're not addressing residential fencing yet, absolutely not, yeah. We're, we're just, just chewing on the smaller part. Um, and addressing where they wanted some changes made.
Commercial zone.
Right, so, um, basically what I added in there was, they can have vinyl cha- chain link fence screened with, and this, that was already in the U D O, what I changed was view, viewing, view obscuring, with view obscuring plant materials of at least five feet tall at the time of planting, and reach the desired height within five years of planting. Fences, wall, fence slash walls, plantings, or any combination of, shall result in an opaque screen that obscures views from the ground to a height of the objects, object being screened, or a maximum height of fifteen feet, and shall be erected to directly screen dumpsters, loading docks, donation boxes, or any similar facility from public view. No dumpsters, donation boxes, or similar facility, facilities shall be kept in open or exposed view from any residential lot, street, or sidewalk. That may cover that issue we were talking about earlier with, you know, village business district items, that would, that would cover donation boxes, dumpsters, similar facilities from public view, um, loading docks, with an opaque screening. So you can use any combination of fence and, and, or. But those have to be mature at five foot tall at the time of planting.
So, so this particular-
That's for residential stuff, yeah, that's really for residential, we, we still have to re, relook at the fencing for just residential stuff, the residential zoning, um, that needs, that's where this comes in, but we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, so read through that, is there anything in there, you know, this still has to go to the village council, they still have to okay this. Um, is there anything that jumps out that you just don't think is applicable, or can be written a different way?
Not for you.
What's your thoughts?
Looks great.
Okay, and so that would cover village business district, and in theory, you know, if that building is sold, then that would apply to that building, would it not?
Yeah.
What the, the village business district encompasses?
Um, we have to look at all of the different-
Very small area.
It is a very small area, but it's-
Is it like here, general store?
It's our commercial, it's our general store, this is in Mon.
It's basically just this, I mean, it's in the, all right, so let's look at the map, it's a, the blue section, it's kind of a blue section, right there.
The somewhat blue?
Yeah. Next to the yellow, there's a small area, and then there is-
It doesn't cover the golf course, though?
No.
No, it does not, nope, nor would it cover that building, that's true.
Okay.
That new building that the golf course just built to store all their tools and-
Yeah, it's totally aesthetic.
It doesn't cover that.
It would not, but maybe we can-
I'm more concerned about the way they're kicking and stuff, I mean, it looks like a parking lot to me. And, and-
I'm gonna bring that up with, um, she said she was gonna make a complaint about it, but, um, I'm gonna bring it up with Lisa and see what direction we can go in on that, but I think this covers, this basically covers the store and the other set business district that would be commercial, I, I can't remember exactly where that's at.
We don't really have anything else in the village.
Is it, is it the, the triangle over here?
No, but, uh, it is very little, but if we ever had somebody come in and develop, or get approved for development, that's where they would go in, it would be part of the village business district.
Okay.
It's like a periwinkle, it, it's all the, it's like a periwinkle color.
Yeah, I see.
Right up, right up, up a little bit more, up, 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 right there, oop, over, yep, periwinkle. More to the front of the road, Hoffman Road, yep, that's gonna be it, and across the road, the triangle, all of that is village, village business.
Well, and this side too.
Mm-hmm.
So this little Y that you drive in on, and there's like this big brown, is that offices, or what is that?
Uh, it used to be offices, and I think they've redeveloped it into depart- apartments.
Apartment?
It is, that's not part of the commercial. It is commercial, it is commercial, but he got a, he got, yeah, it's commercial, but I think he got a, um-
Variant.
A variance to get, to turn that into residential properties, that happened five, six years ago, maybe longer?
Isn't this owned by this, this doctor that's down the road that?
I don't know for sure, but I think, I think so.
Cause part of the rumor was they put in a restaurant.
I think, uh, it's been many things at, at different times, but it is commo- it is zoned commercial, and it is intended for commercial. So if he wants to do that, you know, that would be up to the village council whether they approve that or not, but, I mean, I think it'd be welcome.
Sure.
So, but, but, it is a very little area, but we, I think we still need to, to keep working down this vein um, to cover some of that maintenance. But I need to ask and see, what, I need to get guidance on what we're, like what direction we can even go in.
Hmm.
All right, but as far as the village business, business district, is this a acceptable for us?
Yeah.
You know, is this a good recommendation?
Yes.
Do I have a vote to approve?
Okay, most, uh, I know-
Motion to approve?
I only have one question, you know, I mean, you did define mature, but, you know, there are other subjective, like, an opaque screen, yeah, okay, we know what opaque is, but it's, it can't just be like corrugated steel or something like that.
It has to be, um, it has to be wood, stone, brick, wrought iron, aluminum, powder coated aluminum, PVC, or a combination of.
Aesthetically pleasing of, in some way.
And it has to, I think, um, you know, it has to be approved.
Okay.
So that, that would still have to come, fencing has to be approved by the village administrator, and if she, if it falls outside of this, she's not gonna approve it.
Okay, so there is some degree of subjectivity there?
Yeah, it can't be like, it's not gonna be, um, a long time ago, they used to put up those corrugated, like, green things um, to hide dumpsters and stuff, I think those are kind of a thing of the past, but we don't want to see them again.
No.
I agree with you.
Okay, you need a second on this?
I do need a second on this.
I'll second.
All right. All right. Um, we will get that to the village council on their work session, they will see that. Okay, let's talk about barn dominions, no, let's talk about, let me see, where's our? That may not be there.
Nope.
That, okay, so we're not to barn dominions yet, you have the four mice sent, you guys? Or, it kind of went down through our agenda?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so let's go to, so we talked about solar placement, we talked about the old business of that fencing, let's go to modular homes.
Uh, can I make a second question?
Sure.
Because in my research, um, whether it's modular or the barn dominions, uh, they are allowed?
Mm-hmm.
And they both have to comply with what regular design guidelines.
Barn dominions are not, and I'll tell you why.
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed, and I'll tell you why they're not allowed, because if you look in our village, um, building codes, it specifically states that you cannot have, um, if you look at the business codes or building standards, you cannot have a, a exterior wall of corrugating metal or aluminum.
Okay.
So that, and a barn dominium has that, but the modular, I'm with you.
Okay, but I've seen examples today when I was looking at, that, that they include, the material is one thing, but the, the, it's the design itself that it's called barn, because they resemble a barn, they don't have to be metal.
They don't, but I don't think we also should restrict that anymore, what's your thoughts around that?
Well, I mean, they're, to me, they're two separate things, what I was trying, what I'm trying to address is the fact that regardless of which way you go, that they both have to follow, uh, whatever-
The design standards, the building classes.
Standards you have for any other property.
I agree with that, and especially with the modular homes, what we were asked to do is put it somewhere, because we have a definition, we have to put it somewhere, so it has to be in the table of, um, uses under single-family home, and that's really where we go. It is, it is very different than a manufactured home, there is a designation behind that to a modular home, there's no difference between a modular home and a stick-up home, um, from a North Carolina Building Standard Code.
It's only the cost.
That's a barn dominium, that's a barn dominium.
Yeah.
Um, what, I, I kind of went through everything I researched, really, I think what we need, we again, need to kind of take a step back and think about large lot versus small lot. Does that fit into the small, into the low-density areas in the regular residential, into block fires?
Couldn't you have that style in the smaller?
Really, you, it's hard to do that, it, these are for large, the reason they're barn dominions is because they're the size of a barn, they're all open space inside, they're huge.
They need acreage.
They need acreage, they're big, they're, it would be the smallest-
Smaller version, right?
But could you see that in the na- that's really, could you see that in your next door neighbor?
Okay, but that, that's my point, is that it has to comply with some design.
And that's where I think we, you know, you can go back to the-
If I wanna have the look of the other one with that kind of a building, I could do it in my, on my smaller lot.
I mean, that to me is a barn, this, this is not, this is a nice house.
I'm supposed to be a, resemble a barn.
No, I know, maybe that was a barn, but you, you, there is a-
No, I understand, but I mean, yes, well, I mean, becau- the, the point is that the size of the house has to comply with whatever, you know, your lot size is, one way or the other.
It's true, not only the size of the house, but the, the look.
And the heights.
That's what I'm saying, the, the look, the look, I think.
Barn dominions are barn dominions because they have large barn doors on one side usually. Typically, they have a large door on them, on the sides are usually a large roll-up door, um, they don't have to, but that's typically what's on them, they're typically reserved for large lot applications.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that they have a place in the small lot residential areas. I don't know that they fit in with the look of the rest of the community.
Yeah, I mean, honestly-
You could do that out of Grand Pines Estates, that's would be a place.
Well, my thought was that they would be, um, that you could have, that we would still keep all the design standards, change the aluminum side or corrugated metal side to be, have an exception.
That, that is a barn dominium.
But that does not fit in our community, I don't, I don't know that it does.
My house is bigger than that.
But that's metal.
No, no, I'm not talking about that, but that size, it looks, my house looks bigger than that, and I'm in a small lot.
I think that we could, I agree with you on that, if you made it out of a different material, but then it's not a barn dominium, is it?
Yeah, well, it is under, look, it's, it's advertised as such.
But you don't know what the interior that is, like, you don't know, is that a metal-framed building? Cause that's usually how they start.
But that's the point, is that are we ready to have, uh, anywhere, something that is wood metal outside?
Absolutely, um, I wouldn't have any problem at all, hands down, saying in R A five, in R F two hundred, in E U, and in R E, all of those large lot, mostly over five acres plus, could easily hold a barn dominium and whatever farm, mini-farm, or not, that you want.
But you're talking about two different things, she was just talking about the siding, I don't think we want to allow metal siding.
Okay, and I agree with that, I would not.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if that was built next to me, I would have a problem if this was built next to me, though.
And there, there, I-
That to me is not a true barn dominium, but it maybe qualifies as, because it's apartment, it's a barn.
I think that's a barn, but, okay, so there, in the things that I was looking at, they have log style barn, uh, barn dominions.
What's a log style?
It looks like a log cabin.
Oh, log style.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, language difficulties, I apologize, it's my fault. I was like, log style, what's that look like? I thought you meant, um, like, um-
She said log.
Well, when you said that, immediately I thought the, the, not ship lap, but the other one that has like the little strip on it, it's wood, but it has a little strip- It's wood, but it has a little strip. That word, that's just that word.
Completely relevant. I go, Alexa, I can, I can no longer say, uh, locks, like, smoke salmon? It writes lo- L-O-C-K.
Yes, even your Alexa can't understand. I don't feel bad then, I don't feel bad.
My accent, but it does, doesn't get it that I'm, I want smoked salmon.
That's funny.
I, I think you do address in this five here, it says, the following materials shall not be used.
Yeah, I, I'm not.
That is all written here.
Corrugated steel or?
Yeah, and, well, we can vote on it. I mean, if you, if you're not ready to see corrugated steel, then that is perfectly fine. Let's put it to a vote, but break is not here, and so.
Yeah, I'm talking about more of a design style, more than, because we don't have such a thing.
But there's nothing.
Other than, and the.
The only thing that would change the design style from barn dominium to, like, what, what is out there now, is that metal piece. You can bring a barn style home in here all you want to, and, because it doesn't, as long as it doesn't have metal on the outside, you can do that all day long. That's, that, we're not talking about that, but if we're gonna put barn dominiums in there and allow for a metal building, that's, that's where, that's where the.
Then I agree with you. If you're talking about the specific, you know, the, 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 a, a large, a large one with me- metal and the barn doors, then I would put, just put it in the, you know, the larger lots. But, I am not, I mean, in driving around, I don't see any houses that look like a barn.
No, and most of the barn dominium style have beautiful front porches. They're not, what, they're not just like an old barn, and then you turn it into a house. It's really a, a, a cool, very modern, far modern style. Um, I would say, and what I put in here, I didn't change anything in here except for, um, art we have in twenty-one dash six ten point two building designs, if you, yep, you've got it. The only thing that I thought would be a consideration for the word barn dominium, so it's in there, and there's no, you know, question around it, um, for the purposes of corrugated metal or fiberglass sheeting, except for, um, and we can even take that away from the fiberglass sheeting, um, in zones RA five, RE, RF two hundred, EU districts only, and specific to permitted barn dominium style, single family residence builds.
But, okay, so, s- the po- the point I was trying to make initially, is the fact that one or the other, they, they have to comply with building standards.
Yeah.
Period.
Exactly. And I agree with that, and I think what you're saying is there's no difference between a barn dominium and a regular house, if you follow these standards. I was, when, when we were tasked to look at barn dominiums and see where we were willing to go on that, I looked at it and thought, well, the barn dominium's no different than the other house, the modular's no different than any other house, and according to our standards that we have already.
Yeah.
Um, except for that corrugated metal option.
So, so basically, I think that we can integrate it into single family homes.
Mm-hmm. But do we change the design standards to allow that metal, or not allow metal?
I don't think.
I don't know. I, I, I don't think that in the, you know, general population, like, if I'm driving around, I don't know that I wanna see a, you know.
But for someone who's building a barn dominium, that's what they love about that, right?
It's kind of an industrial.
I mean, if you have a lot of land, and you build something like that, that's one thing, but in my, immediate neighborhood, not just my block.
I agree with you. I don't think it has a place in the, in the low density areas. In the very low density areas, I think it has a place.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe like a lot that it's, you know, at the very least, what, three, four, even five acres, so that it's.
That's why, did you read this?
Did what?
Uh, this one?
I mean, if you've got a barn dominium with, with hardy plank, that's fine.
Right.
Corrugated steel or fiberglass sheeting?
I don't know, but I, I think we can go back on the fiberglass sheeting. I agree with that. I was trying to find that application. I just don't think that's a, I just don't know that that's a residential application anymore anyway, that's outdated. But the, the corrugated metal, um, I would not wanna see that in the neighborhoods, but I would not, I, I would have no problem having seen these things in the other areas, like out in the large lot areas, where horse farms in the, the RA five, areas where you have large lots, and most of those homes aren't even seen from the road anyway. There, to me, there was, I didn't have a problem with those. But we can vote, I mean, certainly, but I would not, I agree with you. It's, there's two applications here. For the barn dominium that I'm thinking, um, a true barn dominium would be more for a rural, very rural, mostly farming application. Um, I don't think anybody would wanna come and move that next to the golf course. So, yeah, I agree. No, no to, you know, they ha- it can be a barn dominium, they wanna call it whatever, it just has to follow the design standards. But are we willing to allow the design standards to change for a large lot barn dominiums?
Well, I mean.
Or keep it the way it is?
Rainview Vista, you know, you've got, you've got large properties over there, can't see what's in there. I don't know if necessarily it makes a difference, but I like to keep it consistent.
Right.
So, I mean, I haven't go for no corrugated metal or fiberglass sheeting, period, no matter where the house is.
Is the design standard different for Grand Pines Estates, or they have their own?
They have their own, but they have, they have their own, but they have to stay within the zoning for us. So they have their own, what they allow, but it mirrors what we allow for their zoning.
But I'm thinking architecturally, they would allow the corrugated metal, and they might, and so, but, but if it doesn't line up with what we set here.
They can't.
They can't.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm open to have them somewhere in a very large lot that I, because basically I will not see it, so.
And this is becoming the trial, this is like a big deal now, right?
I think that's why we were tasked with it. We, she, I think Lisa's had a couple people approach her, um, different design, different developers, design people that said, hey, we wanna, we wanna consider a barn dominium, but the zoning has to be right. So, it, she, she said, okay, you guys chew on it for a little bit, see what you can put together, and then bring it to the village council and see what their thoughts are on it.
Well, I, I, I'm only saying that, you know, in all the images and stuff that I saw today, uh, the style is what's called, uh, what seems to apply, and then the, the, the exterior material is, you know, some of it, some of them have it. Yeah, the way I understood it from looking at it, it's a barns, farm style home kind of thing. And yes, I agree that usually it's a larger one, and I've seen, I've seen videos on it, so I know that, you know, we're talking about a.
A true barn dominium.
You know, like in Jackson.
Yeah, the base of a true barn dominium is actually a metal framed building. That's a true barn dominium. Now, you can do whatever you want to on the inside of that, and usually it's open, open being.
Usually it is open, yeah.
And, you know, big, beautiful, open being, all that comes after, once they frame it in. Um, you wouldn't even know that you're standing in a metal framed building. But that's usually, you know, for a barn dominium style, that is the typical base of it, and then they add to it to make it what you see there.
Well, I mean, I don't think the metal frame is necessarily an issue. It's what the exterior looks like.
Right.
I think what you've got written here pretty much says it, you know, no corrugated metal or fiberglass.
No, that's what's already there. That's what is, what I wrote in red, I put an exception, and I agree with you, no fiberglass sheeting, but I would, I would allow corrugated metal with the exception in only large lot areas.
It's really just coming down to aesthetics for this barn dominium.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. You know, aesthetics, visual, not really structure and the integrity of what they're doing or building, it's just, do we like the way it looks as a community? So, that's the part of it.
The ones that I've seen, and, you know, this is something that even my son was considering building, we're talking about a diff- completely different environment. We're talking about Texas, uh, you, my son lives in New Mexico, and he owns a lot that, you know, that it's up in the mountains, open. You know, I mean, that's kind of, but I don't know that we have the setting for, for, unless you have a lot of land, then, I mean.
Well, what about in the RA? I mean, we've got people with hundreds of acres, but they're not allowed to build a barn dominium.
No, but that's my point, is that if they're in a, in a setting like that, then I think it's okay to, for it to be, uh, uh, you know, uh, the corrugated m- metal exterior. However, the actual s- style, meaning like, you know, farm style, where, I, I don't think that it would be a problem for me to see it anywhere.
Yeah, the farm style fits within the correct design standards.
Right.
But the barn dominium, the true barn dominium with the, with the metal frame beginnings and base does not.
Well, I don't know.
That's where we have to kind of come up with something, you know?
All the pictures that I've seen, it seems like it has a different, different type of, uh, the, the other thing is that a lot of the ones that I saw, the metal is actually painted.
Yes.
So therefore.
It's not shiny, yeah.
It's not like, you know, that it looks like a silver, you know, uh, silo.
Right.
Or anything like that.
No, it's, and it's.
It just kind of like blends in with everything else.
And, and the metal is not the metal, it's not the metal framed building of a hundred years ago, or not, that's a facetious, but, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, what farms were putting up to house their, you know, I have one on my property for my farm equipment. Um, and it's a dull, you know, it's a color, it's blue, but it dulls after time. These are very different. It's a new material. It is still metal, but it has almost a coating on it, um, where you don't ever have to paint it. So it's, it's a different type of, of metal. I don't, I, I can't explain.
I mean, like, let's say, this is probably metal, right?
That is, yeah. It's got a metal roof and metal.
And it doesn't.
Metal siding. I don't have any problem with the, the metal siding, um, and I, I changed it around in my notes, just so we are clear on, I moved or fiberglass sheeting to the end.
Yeah.
So, you know, while we're having this discussion, so it would read, you know, for design purposes, you know, um, except for corrugated metal, which is not allowed in anywhere, except in RA five, RE, RF two hundred, EU district only, and specific to permitted barn dominium style, single family residence builds. So it would be only for that application. You couldn't come in and design some other residence and use corrugated metal. A modular, or, you know, a smaller modular that are, you know, or even a manufactured home, um, which are allowed out in the, the RA areas, um, that, you wouldn't be able to do corrugated metal on that. So you'd have to have some type of, that would, that would keep it to the barn dominium specific um, in the large lot areas.
I don't know.
So do we need to table that and come back to it, or are we just gonna take a vote on whether we like the metal part or not?
Uh, I feel bad about continuously, because now I'm faced with this, you know, myself, continuously putting more and more and more and more restrictions to the point where you feel like you're, you know, you're not allowed to do anything.
I have to agree with that.
So, I mean.
We're trying to loosen a restriction, not add one.
I, because it just feels like, well, you, you know, like, I mean, okay, I'm packing up, I'm moving out of here, because I can't do anything. You know what I mean? It's like, I, uh, I, I think that we have to, I think that we can address it by setting standards as to how the looks of it, you know, like.
I think that would be harder than to say you can or cannot have, yeah.
The point, the, the, no, what I'm trying to say is like, you know, that, that if the, the appearance of it. Okay, let, let's say our illustrious now, uh, you know, building that we, the, the building that we have in the corner of Hoffman and and Woodland Circle, you know, the, the, the shed over there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want it to look like that. That's what I'm trying to say.
I, I think that would be up to the administrator, but ultimately, I think it would have to have, that's not a barn dominium.
Okay, but I wanna make sure that that's not the case.
But I think, you know, I agree with your point. I don't want it to look like that because of the siding they used on that thing, and I think if we've addressed it correctly, corrugated metal or fiberglass sheeting exterior is not permitted.
That's what is existing right now.
Yeah, but I mean.
We didn't address that, yeah.
Well, as I say, if we address it correctly, what I would suggest is we prohibit corrugated metal or fiberglass sheeting, or whatever that building is over at the entrance.
But we can't, like, they were allowed to put that up. We would, that, that can still happen.
Yeah, I don't want that to happen anymore.
That's a whole nother application, yeah.
Yeah, but they were allowed to put it up because we didn't have any jurisdiction there.
That was, the village council approved it. So therefore, it was put up. We have no say over that.
Before I ever got it.
We have no say for that.
When I asked about it, it was already a matter of fact.
So I, I think, I'm gonna call a vote. Um, I vote we allow corrugated metal on barn dominiums only in RA five, RE, RF two hundred, EU districts only, and only specific to barn dominium style, family residences.
Okay, but what you're saying is you're, you're restricting it without the, the siding, or without the corrugated metal. You're not allowing it anywhere else, except?
No, I'm saying it can be, a- actually, a barn dominium can be anywhere you want it to be, as long as it follows these design standards, but the typical barn dominium that somebody out in the, the RA five, or the farms, or out in their hundred and two hundred acre place, that would be the very large seven, eight thousand, hundred square feet. That.
Okay.
That is usually corrugated metal, and they are not allowed to do that. I'm saying we lift that restriction.
No, I, when, when.
I would vote against it.
Okay.
I don't want it anywhere.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, uh, if we, if we're putting it.
And right now, go ahead, sit back, sir.
Like, like, Tasha here, she owns, how many acres?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine acres. I've never seen her house. She's like on the other side of.
Nobody will see my house.
I will not see. So if she, she did that.
Seventeen hundred feet off the road.
And, and, and a lot of the lots that I drive by, like, when you go to Jackson Springs here, you don't see the house whatsoever, because it's way, I mean, way off the.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but it's.
He's, yeah, he's, and that's, he's.
I don't wanna even open the door.
Perfectly entitled to the absolute, and that's what a vote is for, and to be clear, we're just voting on whether or not we recommend this to the council at all in our group. We're voting within our group. Um, and then once we're done with that, we can vote on the language, and then that's what we do at the council.
Uh, but I, I see it.
I say yes. Okay, I think it's part of it.
I won't see, I will, I will wanna see it, that you can put it anywhere, except for the metal part, that you can only do it in, in, in the.
The large lots. And that's how it is written here?
I am fine with that.
That's how we've got it written, and I did remove, um, I did change it to where that metal sheeting is not allowed anywhere. Or not metal sheeting, the fiberglass. Um, I changed the wording to say that corrugated metal is not allowed except in RA five, RE, RF two hundred, EU districts only, and specific to permit, per- permitted barn dominium style, single family residence build, and that's, and then you come out of quotations or fiberglass sheeting. So basically, it says metal, corrugated metal is not allowed anywhere except for in the barn dominium and in the large lot locations, and fiberglass sheeting is not available, or not allowed anywhere at all.
So if I wanted to build the style.
You could build it.
I can build it.
As long as it doesn't have metal, corrugated me- metal on it, absolutely. As long as it fits within the design standards, and it does. You would just have to use, um, uh.
Okay.
Whereas, uh, you could be, you could use concrete block, asphalt singles, wait, no, shall not be used, sorry, sorry, sorry. That, so you would not be able to use concrete block, asphalt shingles, glass block, um, except for decorative purposes, corrugated metal or fiberglass sheeting. Any other style of wall, you could build the barn dominium style with that. And I think it, and honestly, from a, from a semantic point, I think that it changes then from a barn dominium to a farmhouse style. That's the difference.
Yes, yes.
The corrugated metal is the metal framed building that makes up the barn dominium style. I think anybody can build a farmhouse style anywhere they want in the community, because it does fall within that, um, that design standard.
Right.
So you could build, if you wanted to build one tomorrow, and you're, and, you know, level your house and build one, as long as you were compatible with these design standards, you could build any style of home you want, but I think it turns out to be a.
With this.
Farm style, modern farm style home.
Okay.
Okay, so three to one, we voted to, to send this wording to the, okay, so.
So, are, are we like somebody?
Motion to approve?
Okay, that's somebody else other than me, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, Tasha, do it again?
What'd you say? All right, she's, what'd you say? Uh, we seconded, yeah, I, I motion to approve, she seconded.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I'm marking, uh, Montez absent.
Yeah, I think so. All right.
She didn't even send you a message?
Nope, I did not get a message, so I don't know what happened there. All right, so let's go to, uh, detached garages.
Well, I mean, did you wanna do modular?
Um, did, I thought we, yeah, we should look at, yeah, no, no, let's look at modular, you're right.
Or are we doing the, the same thing?
Well, modular is a little different, you have to follow all the design standards, a modular home, uh, according to the state of North Carolina Building Code, it is the exact same as a standard built home. And the only thing we were tasked with is where to put it, we already have a definition for it, we need to put it somewhere in, in the table of uses.
I, 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 I don't have any problems putting it anywhere you can put it.
It has to follow all design standards, all North Carolina codes, um, you know, I know we had some discussion with it earlier.
It's just like any other house that you see.
Why are we calling it modular when all the text references manufactured?
Which?
The stuff that you sent us to read.
That is the difference in the manufactured home and a modular home. That's what, that's the text I sent was the difference between them. A manufactured home does not meet the North Carolina Standard Building Codes, it meets the HUD standards, the Nor, the, the federal HUD standards. But it is on its own, um, a manufactured home comes on a, like, it's got an attached axle and trailer, and it's, for all intents and purposes, it is a trailer.
Doesn't that have a vehicle registration number and not an actual?
Right, that's, that is mainly the difference between a manufacturer and modular home. A man, a modular home does not come on an axle, it is, it's basically giant legos.
Parts of, part of the home, and it's a simple dumpster.
Right, but it has, the foundation is built onsite, and then it is put-
And you can do the same thing with a manufactured home.
You can put a, you can put a manufactured home on a foundation, a permanent foundation, but the axles and all of the framing is still there.
Okay.
That's the difference. Um, and it still has, it actually, from, from the lending purpose, it has, it still has a VIN number, like a vehicle, and it also still has a manufactured sticker that's inside of it as well, even if it gets tied down to a permanent foundation, which there's nothing wrong with, um, but it's very different than a modular home that comes in in pieces, is put on a permanent foundation, just like a stick-built house. The only difference is it's built in a non, it, it's thirty-five percent more efficient, I've done more reading on this mess than I ever cared to know about. Um, it is thirty-five percent more efficient because it is no longer adhering to any environmental issues, um, they, they don't have to be in the environment.
And, and at least, for the way I see it, the booster, better built than the-
They never are exposed, like, like you see these houses that are built, the framing goes up, there's no roof, and then it rains for two weeks. All of that is covered in rain, it has to dry and all that. Modular homes are never exposed to the environment before that roof is covering it. So there are, it's, and, and it's thirty-five percent more efficient, it's built thirty-five percent faster, because they never have to take a rain day.
And it costs less. And it costs less.
It costs less because they never have to take a rain day. So, and it, you know, a manif, but from, from the standpoint of the North Carolina Building Codes, there's no difference in a modular home and a stick-built home, and everyone in every UDO treats them exactly the same.
Yes.
So you just said modular, that's different than a manufactured.
Right.
So modular is where they still build the whole home offsite.
Right.
They bring that whole home in, in pieces, so manufactured home, we don't allow it in the village.
No.
Modular, we do.
Right.
Okay.
And the reason that they're allowed, and I, I think we had had some discussion earlier, he was saying, I just don't wanna see them at all, but they're already here, because they adhere to all of the, the, the build design standards from a, from the North Carolina code standpoint, from every standpoint. A manufactured home does not adhere to those standards, it, it is mostly metal framing and-
Well, just to address what I said before, I'm looking at the definition of a manufactured home, and it's like a double Y, you know?
Right.
Transportation is on chassis, no way.
Absolutely.
Modular?
Not a manufactured home.
Okay, it's stick-built, you know, okay.
Right. It's still sixteen on center, it still has everything, the, every code that a stick-built house will have to have, including exterior, interior, windows, everything, nuts to bolts, will have to be North Carolina code, just like a stick-built house.
As long as, you know, so, so when we had that discussion last time, you know, I was associating modular with manufactured.
Manufactured, it's an, honestly, that is such, it, it's, it's so easy to mix them up, and I deal with them on a regular basis, and not manufactured usually, um, every once in a blue moon, but modulars all the time, we've got them all over the, the county. I mean, beautiful farmhouse, yeah.
Manufactured to me is a trailer.
It is, and it's sometimes a double Y, and there's nothing wrong with the trailer.
No, but-
It just, it has its place, and this community is not really it, but they're already not allowed, that's already in the UDO. And they are allowed in RA five, but that's a, you know, that's, that's within the UDO, we're not changing any of that. The only thing we're doing is, because we have that modular definition, we're gonna change the table of authorized uses, where it says single-family residence, it will have in parentheses, modular, we will also have, you know, barn dominium there now, and a definition of.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Under the one sixty D dash nine ten C, it says a local government may not adopt or enforce zoning regulations or other provisions that have the effect of excluding manufactured homes from the entire zoning jurisdiction, or that exclude manufactured homes based on the age of the home. So this is saying that we can't ex, we can't exclude and-
They're not excluded from the entirety of the district.
Okay.
You can exclude certain areas, you cannot entirely exclude, because that puts people at a disadvantage.
Right.
If you would like to move into the RA five area and have a ma, a manufactured home, all day long, you can do that.
Okay.
So it's, it, when you're setting zoning, in, if the North Carolina General Statute says you cannot exclude, basically, they're saying you can't take a whole swatch of an area and exclude people out of that completely.
Okay.
You can make different zoning, where some things are appropriate in some areas and some not, but you can't exclude them totally. Um, for, for every reason, that, that, that's not right, you know, it's, but what's not right for one section may be just fine in another, we can't, as a community, come in and, and put, take a broad one and go, that's it, we don't, we don't let them anywhere near us.
That's discrimination.
Exactly, exactly, so we do have, um, there, manufactured homes are allowed in the RA five area, um, I can't remember the other districts, but, uh, I know RA five for, for sure, um, but, you know, not in, you know, RS forty or RS twenty. Not in certain areas, yes, in some, but that doesn't exclude it totally.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, it's not discriminatory because of that, you know, there is a, a zoning set for them, um, so-
All right, move, who's moving? You wanna move to approve to?
You wanna move to approve? Move to approve? I will second.
Okay.
All right, so, um, modular, we are, we are, we just are gonna add that to the table of authorized uses. Oh, there we go, manufactured homes, um, just for our research and knowledge for future, is allowed in RA five and CZ. CZ, um, yes. What is CZ? That's on the table of uses, what's CZ?
Are we, are you gonna schedule, uh?
Training?
Yeah.
Yes, that will be at the end of the meeting, we're gonna talk about some times.
CZ, conditional zone.
All right, well, that's, that's a lot.
Conditional zone, so if, if there is, um, it can also be a conditional approval, okay.
Okay, talk about it now, then we're done.
We still have to talk about detached garages, swimming pools, and-
No, we don't have to. No, we don't have to do it all at one minute.
Oh, they wanted this by their work session. Let's go another fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Detached garages are easy, they're-
Accessory building.
They're not an accessory building when someone doesn't have a garage.
Oh, so it's-
So, that's why there's, that's why there's need.
You don't have a, you can't have another?
No, what I'm saying is, in our UDO, it talks about detached garage.
But it does, because, do you remember that I brought up, there's a, I don't, I'm not gonna say the occupation, there's a person that lives around the corner, kind of, when I used to walk that way? That, they do have garages, and they have a, a separate garage, and I brought it up to Mary, and she says that it's an accessory building.
But in the UDO, the exact wording is, if you do not have a garage on your home, then it's not an accessory building, it does not follow under that code, and we have nothing that says what it can be or can't be, if it's, let's say, okay, let's say I bought a house that was built here in nineteen eighty-two, and my little one-car garage is little bitty one-car garage that was standard in one nineteen eighty-two. I am going to take ten thousand dollars, and I'm gonna enclose that garage, put a beautiful sun, sun door on it, and I'm gonna make that into my sunroom, I no longer have a garage, I need a detached garage.
Oh, maybe they can do that because-
You may, that's what I'm talking about, if you don't have an existing garage, or if you do something to upgrade your home under code, not just, you know, willy-nilly, but under code, and you change that garage into part of the under-roof square footage, then you no longer have a garage, then your garage is a detached garage and not falling under an accessory building. And because-
It'll be located closer than twenty-five feet twenty street, and should be, should be side or rear fencing.
The question is, what's this, what's the size?
Side or rear fencing?
Most of the homes in our community have a two-car garage and a golf car garage. So we look at what the total square footage for that is, and, and that's probably, you know, twenty-five hundred to a three thousand square foot home.
I basically said, uh, thi, this is where I kinda was questioning things, I, I looked up a three-car garage, square footage, that's about eight hundred sixty-four square feet. But what if you have an eleven hundred square foot home? What if you have a twelve hundred square foot home? Should there be some wording in there that says it can't be larger than twenty-five percent of your home? Fifty percent of your home? Let's say, but the way that I have it worded here, um, and do, you've got it, okay. So if it's eight hundred square, sixty-four square feet, that's what we leave it at, it can't be any larger than that, but it can be anywhere in between, then if you have a twelve hundred square foot house, you could build an eight hundred sixty-four square foot garage that's gonna be seventy percent the size of your home. That's gonna be huge.
Okay, so, uh, let, let, let's look at it.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do this, it's too costly, but let's assume that I'm doing it.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Because since I'm in this, you know, in this situation where it's the smallest one I'm dealing with.
This is a, this is a viable thing, what a viable, yeah.
All right, so my garage is a two-car garage, of which one-third of the garage has been re, redesigned, and I'm not the only one on the block.
I think a lot of people have them, yeah.
And, and so they decided, I guess at some point, maybe the garage had the washer and the dryer there, and decided, forget it, where, so it's enclosed, you know, it's enclosed and legally is, is part of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So my, my garage is basically a one-car garage.
Correct.
All right, so let's assume that I don't, I don't wanna use it, and like you said, I can turn my whatever I have-
Let's say you redesign it, and, and you go by the code, and you have, like, literally, you, you do your studio, and you have it coded to be part of the square footage of your house, you no longer have a garage.
Okay, so now, since I have a, a, you know, three-quarters of, of, of acre, I basically think that I would have room to do the two-car garage.
Yes, and you probably would, and I think that would be reasonable for your size house. I would, I, and I think that that's, that's where we need to have this discussion.
That's the point, is that, so if I enclosed it and I did all of that, would it increase the size of my house, I don't, uh, it was?
No, it just wouldn't be an accessory building, you wouldn't fall under the laws of an accessory building, so we have accessory, okay.
No, 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 but if I enclosed whatever now I have-
Oh, it would increase the s, square foot of your, of your home. If you have it done to code, and you have an inspector come, and they do that, then they would change the footprint of your home on the GIS to show no more garage, and they would include that in your square footage.
And then I could build the-
And then you would have no garage, and then by state law, you can build a garage, because we cannot tell you you can't have one.
I don't think the issue is necessarily the size of the house and the garage, it's whether the new garage is attached.
No, I am trying to understand how this, how this-
Right, yeah, but the size is, I mean, the size could be a consideration, because if you have a twelve hundred square foot home, and you're allowed to build a three-car garage behind it, then the neighborhood's gonna take notice. It, it needs to be, I think it needs to be-
It depends on what it looks like.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Plus, I also feel it's their pro, it's their property, it's, you know, if they wanna build a larger garage, then why would that be a restriction?
I mean, it gets, to me, it gets back to the barn dominium discussion, if they build a detached garage, and it's got corrugated steel in it, it looks like-
Well, they can't do that, because it's not the whole, and-
There you go.
The garage has to go, just like, except even accessory buildings have to go like that.
It has to fit. Just like if you were to do a brand-new house, the brand-new house, if you had a brand-new house with a detached garage, it has to match.
Yeah.
It has to be a like color, like materials, it has to match the home, and that's in there, um, kind of what I wrote in there, just to start us, another starting point, detached garages may be placed on any single-family detached residential lot where the residence does not have an existing garage, provided the following restrictions, the detached garage shall match the primary residence in color and architectural design, shall not exceed eight hundred and sixty-four feet, the detached garage doors may not be located closer than twenty-five feet to any street, and should be side or rear facing where feasible, that comes from the UDO. Um, the detached garage should be placed in the rear or side yard of the primary residence, um, all zoning, building setbacks, and water permeability percentages requirements must also be adhered. But that goes, you know, my question was, should a twenty-five percent rule apply, should a fifty percent rule apply? I'm getting the feeling you're like, no, leave it be, they can have up to eight hundred sixty-four feet.
How big is a eight hundred sixty-four?
That's a three-car garage, yeah, that's a three-car garage, um, and-
Okay, so let's, let, I mean, let's use my, because I mean, my, I got, everybody else has a, is kind of a larger, except my area, larger houses. So if I, I have, I have nineteen hundred and sixty square.
So eight sixty-four, that would be forty-five percent of the size of your home, that's reasonable. Especially if it's to the side or to a rear.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Yep, if I had the money, I would do it.
You think so? She's like, you better believe it, plus, you think about the whole neighborhood, Teresa, not just your house.
Well, because I, I don't have a garage, seriously.
Yeah, and, and a lot of the older homes have either single-car garages, or garages that fit the size of a car from nineteen eighty. Size of a car in nineteen eighty, a regular four-person car-
My house was built in nineteen eighty.
Was a little tiny thing, I mean, nowadays, you can't, you'd have to get a compact to get that thing in one of those garages, and then you barely could be able to get out.
When I, when I did try to park it, you know, when I first moved, I, no way, because I couldn't get out of a car.
I couldn't even imagine. But this would- This would set some standards, right now, we have no standards, if you don't have a garage and you're building a, a garage, we have no standards. Um, because it's not an accessory building, we have standards for accessory buildings. We have no standard for detached garages when there is an existing garage.
All right, I'm forty, it's time.
Yeah, and we're gonna leave out the twenty-five percent or any percentage, we're just gonna say eight hundred sixty-four square feet?
Yeah, sure.
Got it, so any, anybody can build a three-car garage, got it. Doesn't have to be, I think a lot of people would be reasonable, because that's a lot of money to build that big of a garage. Um, okay, so-
All right, I'll move.
All right, I will second.
All right, that's it?
Um, well, not really, but-
What do you want? Okay, I have-
That's all I have written down, because we have-
Okay, I have the fence and I have that.
The fence, we're not gonna be able to get to, we, this, keep this, because we're gonna have to discuss this, and we can bring some pictures, tables and stuff.
I think that the other thing that we could probably really go quickly through is the, is the prohibited activities and items on village property, because if the insur, the insurance says we can't do it, we can't do it.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Do you know what I mean, number seven here?
Did you see that?
Which one are we on now?
Numbers, we skipped over for a second.
Prohibited activities and items, and items on village property.
That comes straight from-
And it says that the village insurance carrier has said that we can't, they can't do it.
That comes straight from the vil, this is the, the, the paper I gave you, that came from the village insurer.
The fir, the, when I first started reading it, when I first started reading, I'm like, what's about it?
We could lose our insurance.
If I wanna have a, a, a party for my grandson, I care.
But that's different, on your own property.
Then I'm like, oh, no, no, this is village property.
Yes, so basically, there's always, and I, and Lisa said, you know, I'm just tired of being the bad guy, I haven't told people no, this comes directly from our insurance saying, if, if we do this, if we allow it, they will not insure us. So we can't have-
No, I'm, I'm fine with it, I mean-
You know, trampolines, moon bounces, amusement rides, um-
It's all I do with the land.
It, it is a liability, and we can't have it on village property, period.
All right, another one that I know.
All right, um, you're moving, I'm seconding. Um-
Okay, and, and I think that the other one, about the swimming pool, I'm okay with it too.
The swimming pool. Can you guys redo that, or did you read this swimming pool piece?
Prohibited to fill a swimming pool using the Foxfire Village meter water system. All pools should be initially filled to a high, high of halfway to the dome. Or the scheme of opening a third party companies, blah, blah, blah. So in other words, if you have a pool, half of it has to be, uh, filled by outside water and then the rest of it, I guess you can do with the village. Uh, not right now, but you could do it.
Yeah, I, I think when they, this is how we did our pool. Um, when I first moved here, we had a pool put in and we had, um, I'm not gonna say the water service because I don't wanna be, you know, I wanna be impartial. But, um, we had a water service come, we're on a well, I'm not drying my well out, and I'm not taking nineteen years to fill my pool up. So I had a service who is readily available in Moore County and Richmond County and Hope County, and they came here with a tanker and they filled my pool halfway up, and then they came with another tanker and filled it the net, the rest of the way up.
How much did it cost you?
It cost me six hundred fifty dollars to fill that pool up.
Okay, that's good.
It was not, and, and I have, um, my pool is fifty by twenty-five, it's a huge pool. Weight, just ginormous, I would not have built that.
Do you wanna move this something?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll prove that.
All right, so.
Sorry, is it freshwater or saltwater?
Uh, mine's saltwater.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll second that then.
All right, and did you see the other part of that?
Which one?
Um.
About this swimming pool?
Yep. Uh, da, 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 da. There's a bottom, yep, the fence needs to be up before the pool water goes in.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's gotta be, uh, all right, so that was, so that brings up the, the fencing.
But that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah, yes.
Right now, we have an approved.
Last the fact that when I was reading it, and I was reading actually Aberdeen and where, that they, that they, uh, the actual pool has to have a fence, not the fence around it.
Right.
So the one that, you know, you know, we had.
That actually follows through, through North Carolina county rules, that, uh, that is allowed.
Uh, we had a discussion when we started, uh, some time ago about, uh, uh, fences. And when people have a pool, so we're talking about a particular, uh, house that they built, you know, they, they said, they erected the fence. And basically, you can look, I mean, it's right on Hoffman, so you can drive by and look at everything inside. And, and I, we were, I started the conversation and Daschun agreed. If you have, if you have a pool and, you know, with, and you go by the.
There was some opacity issues with that, there was an opacity restriction.
Everybody sees in.
But, but he, he did the fence in a way, there was no restriction against this, I'm just gonna point that out. He did it well, everything was in the, within the laws that were at the time. Um, it fit the opacity rules, but that opacity, you can only see it from one side. Like if you get next to the fence, it meets the opacity rules, but if you're standing in front of the fence, it does not meet the opacity.
And you can actually look into it.
But there was nothing in there that said that it had to be from all sides. So he was well within his right to do so. But I agree, fencing for pools needs to make.
Yeah, because we were, you were.
Here's another example, you know, our neighbor, we live on Ran, our neighbor has a, a Arbenvite fence around their pool. There's no fence fence.
So a child could get in there.
If you could get through those bushes and they're, they're like packed solid. And you could probably get through there if you just kinda push it like that, but yeah, I mean.
Well, a child, an animal, whatever, but Daschun brought up, if I have a teenage daughter.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna have.
Yeah, right, I mean, with the opacity rules the way they are.
So we were, so we, so we talked about changing it for pools. However, when I'm looking up today, or whenever I did, yeah, it was, I studied yesterday, research, it seems like the fencing, when you have a pool, the fencing has to be around the pool. Not like this particular house has the fencing around the property.
That is, and that, the way that he has it is a North Carolina rule. If, if other UDOs have it where the pool itself has to be done, that's a, that's a zoning change, that's something they've decided to do themselves.
Talking about.
So what we're talking about here is not about what type of fencing or where the fencing needs to be, just that. You cannot put water in that pool until the fence is in place.
So it has nothing to do with.
From, from a liability.
You don't have to be specific about where the fence is.
Have to have it, that's what's already in the UDO. We're gonna have to address that at some point, the fencing, um, but that's not this, we already have.
This one just, this one just.
Addresses, in addition to requirements, um, in twenty-one above, fences must be erected.
Unless there's a fence.
As to completely enclose all sides of the pool, not bound by a building and self enclosed or self latching gate of equal house shall be installed and locked. This is what's existing in the UDO, um, but we, we were just saying, it need to add here, fencing has to be in place prior to the pool being filled. Just to protect neighbors, children, animals, whatever. You can't just have a blank slate of a backyard of a brand new build, put the water in and walk away and then it be, you know, we couldn't get our fence up for two weeks, that's a huge liability, that's a huge.
This one addresses the fact that this fence has to be around the swimming pool.
Correct, but it also is in a way that it's, you can use a building and you can use, you can fence your yard, it doesn't say that it has to be around the actual pool perimeter. That's not what this says, and that's not what the North Carolina laws say either.
Okay.
You, you can, you can enclose a pool, but you don't have to enclose the actual, like what you're saying. Um, and we can look at that, I mean, I, I'm always.
I, I don't know, I.
But this is what we actually have in the UDO.
Where I lived before, you have to have it around the pool. I mean, you, it's, it is, you absolutely have to have it. So I, uh, you know, it, whether you have one outside or not, that's irrelevant, it has to be.
Yeah, I, I think I'm just going by North Carolina laws.
But that's a different story. But I still would like to address this thing about the fence being, when, where there's a pool. Now, the question is whether it should be the entire, the entire fence can be like that or just simply?
Be like.
In the case what we were talking about.
Oh, that, that's a, that is under North Carolina regulation, I don't think we can mess with that.
I'm talking about the, about.
Opacity?
Yes.
We have to, that's, we have to address that, that's a whole nother issue. Yeah, I agree, we need to address the opacity, we need to put some examples in and put an addendum in the UDO that is easily followed by anyone that would move here or that is existing.
So this is a separate, we don't have to worry about.
This is just addressing the water, you cannot fill up with metered water. You have to use a third party service and you have to have an, a, a invoice or receipt showing where you invoiced or you could face a fine, you, you can't fill up with metered water. The other thing is the fence for that pool, whatever that approved fence is, has to be in place prior to that pool being filled.
We, we haven't decided where that fence has to go yet.
We already have in the UDO existing, that what we created.
Discussion.
Yeah.
This one just talks about, can we, can we make a part of that, of this?
The fence part?
No, of this, uh, this motions thing that we did?
Yes.
So the two, the two sections go together?
Correct, we're making a motion to.
Well, we already did it.
Do all the things we just talked about. All right.
Okay, so.
I, I'm making a motion to approve, do I get a second?
Yeah, we still have landscape plans and that, but you're gonna have.
Yeah, we can come back on the landscape and a couple of, and I'll, and let me go back real quick before we adjourn.
To the complaint?
Nope, um, to prohibited activities, I just wanna read through this, so we have it. And we didn't, because I don't, I think we all read it, but it was, it wasn't actually discussed, discussed.
There's nothing we have to discuss, Daschun.
No, we don't, I'm reading it out loud because no one else heard it, except for us on our papers. And I, that's it. Um, village administrator was given a list of prohibited items by the village insurance carrier. We need to incorporate that and we will do that in the following. Following items are prohibited on village property. Trampolines, moon bounce houses, inflatable, amusement devices and other similar equipment, period, and we've already approved.
Okay, you're doing it for the.
Yep, right.
I will put that, I will put that in the.
And we are adjourned at seven forty.
All right.
Great work.
No, no, you said we were gonna say something about training?